Good evening. I'd like to welcome in everybody to this Norfolk City Council meeting, October 6th, 2025. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and inform the public about the location of the Open Meetings Act posted in the council chambers and accessible to members of the public. This time, I'm, I'd like to, we're gonna say the pledge allegiance immediately followed by a moment, or a moment of silence immediately followed by the pledge allegiance. Thanks.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Beckman.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. All right, we're on to item number five, discussion regarding the discontinuation of recording subcommittees and meetings. Scott, I'll have you start that.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council, that, this has kind of been an ongoing conversation for some time, making a determination at the various subcommittees that are held, or do they need to be recorded? Obviously, the city clerk takes detailed minutes at those meetings and keeps track of the things that are discussed there. The decision was made to change the way that had been done. Daniel Myers-Noly is here tonight, who was the city attorney at the time that decision was made and has the historical review of the legalities of that. Obviously, we wanted to be in full compliance with the law. Also, Mel, our current city attorney, is here and has done that additional research as well, just to make sure we were doing exactly what we were expected by law to do. So, wanted to have this on here tonight, just so there's some open conversations, some transparency on what we're doing and why we're doing it, and see if anybody had any additional comments or questions about any of that. So, that's kind of what brought us here this evening, and we can talk about that as you see fit, Mayor.
Yeah. Anybody want to add to that?
Well, I'll just add his comments. Well, I supported, I asked, I actually, when we first started having meetings, I didn't know we were being recorded. And so, through our meetings and in the subcommittee meetings, there's, there's times where people didn't feel comfortable talking. And I would ask the subcommittee members, like, why wasn't this brought up? And they said, well, they don't feel comfortable talking. Just to give an example, we had one instance in a subcommittee meeting where we were looking to acquire property. The people that, the family that came into that meeting with us, they were talking about family arguing, and they weren't getting along, and so they couldn't agree on a price and couldn't agree on, and they're sharing all this family information that I don't think should be subject to a public requesting that information, and then be able to disperse that personal information amongst the public. So, I fully support taking the meeting minutes, giving the information in what's in that meeting, but there's some topics where I don't feel like it's right for us to bring citizens in those meetings and then have their information just publicly put out there. So, I support the decision.
I would echo that, Justin, I think that's well said. I would support it also, too, because I think things can get taken out of context. And there are some issues that, that maybe are private that, that don't need to be subject to, you know, the public getting information on, on ideas and, and just may, personal matters. So, I would agree with you.
Mayor, if I may, sometimes you can learn best by talking to some of your peer communities and kind of see how they do things. And our city clerk, Kylie, was kind enough to do some verification of that and, and looked into that, just to make sure, hey, how's everybody else handling these type of things? And are they doing recordings that perhaps we could, you know, glean some, some identity in or some direction on how we should be doing that? So, Kylie could be so kind to share, I appreciate it.
Yep. So, I reached out to our other first-class cities. Most of them, I was able to get a response from. We are an anomaly in the fact that we are only one of other sister cities who not only record but take minutes. Columbus is the only other first-class city that does record their subcommittees and take minutes. Apart from that, no other first-class city takes minutes at subcommittee, records subcommittees if they have a discussion with a subset of their council. It is just a private discussion that they do not take minutes on. So, we, when it comes to minutes and recordings, we are an anomaly among first-class cities.
I don't know if you want Mel or Danny to speak to the legality of it.
Yeah, that's fine. Two things for legal here tonight, just basically touch on what subcommittees can actually do, you know, as far as moving on recommendation or what, how that works. And then, maybe the legal, legal part of it, if, what needs to be recorded, what, you know, if you have to, if you don't, so.
Danielle Myers-Noly, former city attorney, currently, city is still one of my clients here, because obviously, this is an expertise of mine, the Open Meetings Act. I'm also, I was very involved in the, the decision, the conversation surrounding ending the recording of our subcommittee meetings. This all comes back to, I mean, there's two ways to look at this. There's the legalistic view and just the practical view, which I think, Councilman Webb, you really touched on. So, the Open Meetings Act, the goal of the Open Meetings Act is so that elected officials are not making policies in secret, right? And so, the entire Open Meetings Act is kind of constructed around that. And when it looks at what, what really goes into a meeting, one of the definitions that comes up is a public body. And a public body is a governing body, which, tonight, you are. What it is not is a subcommittee of the body. And a subcommittee of the body is less than a quorum. So, because there's eight of you, we don't count the mayor in this, because there's eight of you as councilmen, you can meet with up to four people, and as long as you are not holding hearings, making policy, or taking formal action on behalf of the whole, you're able to meet and have conversations. Now, what is done, what we have traditionally done since I was here, I was a city attorney for almost eight years, and my understanding of how subcommittees have always been handled here is that you meet for a specific purpose, that's why you're into different subcommittee groups, it's laid out in city code, it's laid out on our website, you meet and you're talking about possible projects, you're talking about ideas, you're talking about new ordinances, new resolutions, things that are brought to you, whether that's by the governing body, whether that's by your staff, whether that's by citizens, and you're talking about those before you come to a, a meeting like this where you make a final decision, right? There is no formal decision being made in the subcommittee, it's just an opportunity for you to hear about things, to discuss ideas, to hear from your staff, and hear from developers, right? Before a developer wants to invest six figures into starting to plan something out, it's just a time to hear about their idea. And never is there a time where you're saying, this is absolutely not happening, this is absolutely happening. It's just a chance for anybody that comes before you to refine their ideas, right? That is why how subcommittees are handled by this body are not illegal under the Open Meetings Act. There has not been a subcommittee meeting that I've been in that has been handled in a way such that it would violate the Open Meetings Act. And I would challenge anyone who feels differently to sue the city of Norfolk, right? To sue, because that, any, any city attorney worth their weight is going to know how to handle a subcommittee. It's very basic, but it's also not practical to bring every single matter before this body. There's already long meetings, there's very long packets, it's just, it's not practical and nobody else does it. We have, there's way too many things in a city of our size, that's why you have subcommittees, so you can weed through all of the, all of the different ideas that people have. So, when you want to look at it legalistically, you go back to the Open Meetings Act and what it requires. Anytime you have a meeting of a public body, which is this, you have advertising, you have an agenda, there is a recording involved, and there are minutes. When you have a subcommittee, those things are not required. It's very clear when we have them, the city of Norfolk has them at a scheduled time, they're with a certain, the right people that are listed on the website that fall under what's in city code in terms of that subcommittee, but there's only four or less people, four or less councilpersons that are in that meeting. You're not forming, you know, policy, you're not holding a hearing, you're having a conversation. Now, you are not required under the Open Meetings Act to have, to have it recorded, nor are you required to do minutes. It is my understanding, when I started, that the reason for the recordings was in order to help the clerk draft the minutes later. It had nothing to do with any requirements under the Open Meetings Act. It was only done so that maybe the clerk couldn't be there, or the clerk is, you know, every clerk I've known has been very, very busy, so you record it so you can come back to it later. That is why it was, as I understand it, originally started in the city of Norfolk, not under any legal obligation. However, as time went on, especially in the last few years, we've seen that it's not practical to record it, for, pretty much for the reasons that Councilman Webb said. Besides the fact that, you know, legalistically, it's not required, you put that aside. When you have developers, you have sensitive conversations, you have businesses, you have people that don't want that recorded because they don't want that to go out as part of a, an open, a public records request, right? And there's just, it makes it really hard to have a conversation sometime, sometimes when you're talking about sensitive matters, where you're talking about proposed development, it makes it really hard when you know that there's the threat of the recording and it could be turned over to somebody for public consumption. So, that kind of covers, I think, everything you asked for, Mayor. There's no requirement legally that the, that you do this in subcommittees unless you're acting in a way such that you're trying to subvert the Open Meetings Act, which I've never known this body to do. It was only done in the past to inform the minutes. And the minutes are, you know, I think that the consensus among staff, when I left, that the minutes are helpful, there's so many things that go on with the staff and with the, with elected officials, that it's really hard to keep track of when you had all the conversations, so the minutes are practical, they're not required, but the recordings, it makes it really hard to have a good conversation, a good and honest and open conversation when you're recording every single meeting. Thank you.
I do feel the minutes are very beneficial to catch up, if you're a council person who's not on that subcommittee, you get an opportunity to read the minutes before the, it gets brought on the agenda, and you can catch up. I'll just add a couple of things. I was on city council for a long time, and meetings were recorded back when I first got on, I wasn't aware they were being recorded most of the time. It wasn't an issue, it wasn't something we knew about, we just had open conversation, it wasn't something you paid much attention to, until just recently, in the last few years, and that's, I think, where councils kind of was pushing this, is because they didn't feel like they could sit through meetings, and I'm speaking for you, and you can hear up, and Justin touched on it, and have an open meeting with ideas. Because you were nervous and scared that your thoughts and your, what you said could be used against you, because it's main, against you, because you're, it's an idea to formulate ideas, it's a meeting to formulate ideas. And a lot of them can be bad ideas, sometimes they're good thought, and you're just kind of tossing around different things, and at any point in time, one of those statements can be cut up and used nowadays with social media and what we've all got at our fingertips to basically, I don't know, in so many words, but smear certain people on the council. And I think that, and it really has shut down open conversation and dialogue within those minutes, or within those subcommittee meetings. I saw it from just naturally change over the years to where people just sat there and didn't talk, from meetings we had in previous years where it was just back and forth, back and forth, and that, that stopped. And I think that was the concern the council had. So, we'll try it out, you know, we'll see how this works. If, if it, if we see, you know, this is working well for our community, if, I suppose, if the, at certain times, if it becomes something, an issue, because people feel like this is a, a beaten switch, which I don't think it is, we'll have the conversation again. And again, it's always up to who's elected and who's put up here. The council you've currently elected, this is how they feel. You know, they want to be able to talk, they want to be able to share ideas with, without fear of retribution on what those ideas are. Because you can say some things and they don't make much sense. I've done it, I've done it before, and I, I was informed once that I was being made fun of in a, in a subcommittee meeting, some of the ideas I had. And I overthought, I thought about the idea I was presenting, and it was a bad idea, you know, so it does happen. You know, you're not going to be right all the time, because you're just thinking through the process. So, that's kind of where this landed, there's no ill intent, there's no reason to hide or try to hide information whatsoever. We still want somebody there recording the minutes, and we're going to try it out. This, staff was feeling the same way, the same, I think staff was kind of in the same impression, if I, and I'm speaking for you, I think you felt worried about what you said about things that were going on at your, in your division, because you're afraid of what was going to be put out there. So, when our subcommittee meetings felt like they got turned and maybe somewhat weaponized against us, it kind of changed the way you look at it. So, again, like I want to say, the, this is, there's no ill intent here. We'll dig into it, we'll try to, people will try to make it sound that way, but that's not the, that is not what's going on here. It's just to get better information, better thought, better ideas beside, behind something before we bring it out to the open and present it. And then, and we'll have somebody that are recording those conversations via the minutes, just not physically recording it like we used to. So.
Hope that covers anything?
Just to briefly jump in here, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I do agree with Danny's legal opinion and expertise on this matter. Case law's been established, and it protects this body's right to operate within subcommittee committees as a mechanism to obtain information and voice your guys' opinions, and that's all that's occurring in these subcommittee meetings, and they're necessary, so I would just leave it at that.
We, we, we haven't really been practicing around here with the opportunity for open thought for a while now. Years past, there used to be retreats where council would actually physically leave Norfolk, and you have a retreat, and we haven't done that, that hasn't been done for years. The retreats are here now, but they're not like they were before when staff and council got together and had a full day of going over new ideas, new things that would happen. We, we don't do that anymore, just because of the scrutiny that we receive anytime we want to have some conversations. So, we've tried to do our best on our end, listening to what people are saying, to make things as transparent as we can. I think we proved that with how we just presented our budget to the city of Norfolk and how we went through that. That had to have been probably the most transparent process that I've ever been part of, and I've been on council for a while, as far as with how the budget goes. So, I think we're proving the transparency we want to push out there by changing the way we've done our retreats, you know, by changing the way we discuss certain things. I think it's very important, though, as a community, that we don't use subcommittee meetings to govern, right? All the subcommittee meetings can do is to present thought and ideas back to the council, so then we are actually governing from here, where we are talking about things in the open. So, if anybody else wants to add anything, that's what I, that's all I have, so.
I just agree with you, Shane, I think we need to have the open communication, that we're not afraid of, of any of our peers being upset with us for saying something wrong, and I'll be honest, I've, I've said some things in those meetings, too, and it's just like, I wouldn't like, not like anybody to come back on me for those, so I think this is, it's a great thing, and I think it's going to work well for us as council.
Well, I guess, when, you know, the, the way it actually always, because I go back to 2000, back in 2000, we didn't have computers, we didn't get the agendas sent to us, it was brought around by a, by an officer of the law. So, that's how things have changed, yeah. At that time, they were recording to assist the, to assist them to, to do minutes on up on it. It was by no intent at that time, and I don't think, as long as I had been on, that it was ever the intent that this was a public, that that was a public record. So, things have changed a lot, but I, I think that, that as we're looking at it, that's what needs to be, be the case, so, because this body is what makes the decision, it isn't a subcommittee.
Right. Anyone else up here have anything else to say?
Well, I'll just say, there's another aspect to, to, when you have people not, citizens coming to the community, to, to the city to make their community better, how they ever really want to invest in it, or maybe there's something we're trying to acquire that the citizen has. A lot of those conversations now are getting pushed behind closed doors with city staff, and they're not having those direct conversations in those subcommittee meetings with elected officials. And as an elected official, you don't know what you don't know, so you don't know what to ask those questions. Having this as a part of practice now, I can say the first meeting we were a part of that we weren't recording, it was open, honest communication. It seemed like, when we came out of that meeting, it wasn't a waste of my time. Like, quite hard asking, hard questions were asked and answers were given, and that wasn't happening before. So, I think it pushes the one-on-ones out of that office, and it pushes them to talk to the elected body that the citizens have elected to make those decisions, so.
All right. Anybody from the public have anything to add to this conversation? Please come forward now.
Jim McKenzie. I recently learned that the city abruptly stopped recording all subcommittee meetings in June of this year. These are the meetings in which city staff and elected officials meet behind closed doors to discuss issues that ultimately show up on the council agenda. The majority of city policy formation happens in these closed-door meetings, you see that when there's no discussion on agenda items. These subcommittee meetings have been audio-recorded for approximately the last 50 years. If a member of the public wanted to find out the details of what was discussed in one of these meetings, they could get a copy of the recording from the city, but no more. Apparently, during the June 26th Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Meeting, the 50-year policy of recording subcommittee meetings stopped, and in a very strange way. The minutes of the meeting show only two councilpersons and Mayor Clausen were present, along with some staff. The minutes of the meeting state, "Moving forward, the recommendation is to discontinue recordings of subcommittee meetings with the understanding that this is a council-driven decision." Yet, only two councilpersons were present and there was no vote. How is it possible to have a council-driven decision and there's only two councilpersons present and no vote? Did somebody call every councilperson and see if they're in agreement? It's possible to know, there's no transparency. When I asked for all communications involving staff and elected officials on this decision, I was given nothing other than the minutes of this meeting, no other communications. Yet, this change in a 50-year recording policy was made with no vote behind closed doors. Even during the Josh Moaning era, all subcommittee meetings were recorded, but within six months of Shane Clausen becoming mayor, recordings have now stopped. This slams the door on any real public access to subcommittee meetings. Meeting minutes are not a substitute for public access or a recording. During the last election, I stated very clearly, I wanted every subcommittee meeting to be open to the public, no more hiding behind closed doors, no more secret deals. I heard promises of transparency from others during the, during the campaign, unfortunately, there are empty promises. I've heard some staff and elected officials are uncomfortable talking candidly in a recorded meeting, so they want to do it in secret. It's the job of city staff and the job of elected officials to conduct the public's business using the public's money in front of the public. That is why we have open meetings laws, that is why we have public records laws, it's to ensure transparency and accountability from government employees and elected officials. It is to ensure that public policy formation is open to all and not conducted in secret. When comparing to Columbus, all subcommittee meetings of the city of Columbus are publicly advertised and open to the public, but for some reason, Norfolk feels they can't do this, it's absurd. The open, the opening sentence of the Nebraska statute 841408 says, "It is hereby declared to be the policy of this state that the formation," not the voting, "the formation of public policy is public business and may not be conducted in secret." 841409 says, "Every meeting of a public body shall be open to the public in order that citizens may exercise their democratic privilege of attending and speaking at meetings of public bodies. Public body does not include subcommittee meetings of such bodies unless a quorum of the public body attends a subcommittee or unless such such subcommittee are holding hearings, making policy, or taking formal action on behalf of their parent body. I believe the city of Norfolk is making policies defined herein for the majority of their closed subcommittee meetings." An excerpt from the Nebraska Supreme Court decision of Grine versus Fremont School District says, "The basic argument for open meetings is that public knowledge of the consideration upon which governmental action is based is essential to the democratic process. The people must be able to go beyond and behind the decisions reached and be apprised of the pros and cons involved if they are to be able to make sound judgments on questions of policy and to select their representatives intelligently. The city of Norfolk is facing many large challenges. These challenges can be overcome if we all work together, all citizens, in an open and transparent manner. These challenges will not be solved by slamming the door to the public. I urge you to reverse this decision and resume recording the subcommittee meetings. I also urge you to immediately make all subcommittee meetings open to the public to allow for transparency, accountability, and citizen participation. We are better together." Thank you.
Jim, would you say these are secret? You think these meetings are a secret?
Absolutely, they are, Justin.
What do you mean, they're a secret? What do you mean by that?
They're behind closed doors and you don't let the public attend? Pardon?
You don't know they're happening?
No, I don't know they're happening, they're not advertised, how do I know they're happening?
You can call the city clerk and ask what subcommittee meetings are being held this week. You can call anyone in your council and ask them what subcommittees, we've done it before, I've talked to you about it.
You don't advertise them, I don't have to, I don't want to call you every, every day and say, what meeting are you having? You don't advertise them, they're, they're secret, Justin. You cannot deny they're not secret meetings, they're behind closed doors and you don't let the public attend, they're secret.
It'd be a secret if you couldn't call and get the information if you're acquiring it, and then you have meeting, then you have meeting minutes.
Did you listen to what the reason is behind the public records laws, behind Open Meetings Act?
There's not a quorum.
It's to have the formation of public policy be done in public.
So, I would clarify that, the Open Meetings Act does not apply to subcommittees, that's also very clearly established in statute and case law.
Let me restate the, the clear statement, the, the opening sentence of the Open Meetings Act says, "It is hereby declared by the policy of this state that the formation of public policy is public business and may not be conducted in secret." The formation of policy is done in those subcommittee meetings.
I would say the formation of policy is done here, and we, and we argue it here, and we talk about it here.
No. What about the formation of the, of the $110 million, 20-year sales tax situation? That was all done behind closed doors in, in subcommittee meetings, and we didn't know about it until it was on the agenda two days before the council voted on it. All that formation was done in, in secret. I heard discussions on some of those recordings about, how much should we ask for, should we go for a quarter percent or half percent, or 10 years or 20 years? All of that formation was done in those subcommittee meetings.
Have you seen anything that we've done as this council and this body that make you question that we're forming policy behind closed doors?
Absolutely.
Example?
I, I could go on and on, there's all kinds of stuff with TIF, you're giving away millions of dollars of TIF, public money in, in those subcommittee meetings, you're making those decisions when you come to this, when a public hearing comes about, it's already decided. It's all policy formation that happens in those closed meetings, 100%.
I would argue it's not decided.
Yeah. It is. There's so many items that you guys vote on that there's absolutely zero discussion, I'm thinking, God, there should be a lot of discussion on that. It all happened in, in subcommittee meetings, that's why there's no discussion here, it's done in subcommittee meetings. Your job is to be responsible to the public, your job is to have those meetings in front of the public, and you've just decided, I'm not going to do that anymore, we're going to do it all behind closed doors, and you have no access to that, none. Thank you.
I just wanted to inform the body here that there was case law brought against this. City of Elkhorn versus City of Omaha called into question the use of subcommittee meetings, and the Nebraska Supreme Court ruled directly, quote, "The Open Meetings Act does not require policymakers to remain ignorant of the issues they must decide until the moment the public is invited to comment on a proposed policy. The public would be ill-served by restricting policymakers from reflecting and preparing to consider proposals or from privately suggesting alternatives." I just wanted to, to let the body know. I just wanted to, to let the body know.
Just really fast. I, I don't intend on taking up a lot of time, but I think we've seen several years now of really inflammatory rhetoric, and I really hope that we're not making policy decisions based on inflammatory rhetoric and, and things that are based on opinions and not fact. Okay? At the end of the day, if anybody has a problem with this policy, they can either run for office and be successful in that endeavor, or they can go to the state legislature. It is very clear in what our legislature has provided that subcommittees are not covered under this unless you're forming policy. Now, the allegation is that you're making policy, but there is nothing before this body that's saying that that's fact. All ordinances, all resolutions, things involving contracts, everything's brought here. And just as Kylie said, just as case law supports, that is derived from the Open Meetings Act, you are not required to come here and hear about everything for the first time. Things can be presented to you. Staff can bring you ideas. Citizens can bring you ideas. You can hear about those ideas, give them suggestions for how, you know, how to move it forward, or things to think about. But you are not forced to bring every single thing here. That does not mean you're making decisions behind closed doors. That means you're informing yourself before you bring the decision to the full body. So I just want everybody to think, there's a lot of inflammatory rhetoric surrounding this, as there are other issues, and that's not helpful. And it's honestly at point, it's borderline slanderous. So I'm sorry you're dealing with that. Legally, you are not required to record those, and we have been told by many, many people over the course of the last few years that us doing so is ridiculous and that we should not be doing that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Anyone up here?
Is this, so is this something we're going to bring back up and with an actual policy that we're going to vote on, or is this just done?
Does it need a policy?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking a question. That's all. I'm just asking a question. Yes or no is the answer I'm looking for.
I just want to also emphasize that this is an internal policy. This is not related to anything governing the city, city tax dollars or anything like that either. So let's, there's two different definitions of policy that we're using here today.
Right. Any other discussion? All right. Moving on to public comment period. Each individual will be given five minutes for your comment. And just so you know, the city can take no action on your comments and really can't respond to your comment. If there are questions asked during the time that you are talking, you'll have an opportunity to answer those questions. But other than that, we'll stick to the five-minute program.
Okay. Most of you know I'm on the TIF committee. And I've been doing a lot of reading recently, last couple of days. I have a problem. In a lot of these meetings, these TIF committee meetings, at times there's been heated discussion, but we've been discussing what would be the cost of a workforce housing. I'm getting to this, I'm getting to a point here, so. But anyway, we've been discussing what would be the cost of workforce housing. Anyway, if you go back to March 6, 2023, City Council Meeting Number 33 on the Agenda, the City Council approved $200,000, and somebody else gave 300, but it is 500,000. And what would that, what that would do would kind of a matching million-dollar grant to down there at 1414 Phillips in back of the old Courtesy Ford building, that apartment building. And so I looked, I looked into that, and Neighbor Works had, has a hand in that. And like I said, TIF committee, we sit up here and we talk about workforce housing. And in my mind, when I'm sitting up there and we're talking about this, I'm thinking, okay, we're talking about single-family homes. But man, was I wrong. And this is why I'm up here today. I'm a little, oh, man. Anyway, so I had a conversation this morning, this morning on the phone with Roger Natrical. And anyway, this million-dollar grant back in 2023 specified that there were supposed to be 30 workforce homes built within three years. And so I thought, where the hell are they? So I called Roger, and he says, "Oh, they're all in that apartment building." And I thought, what? And unbelievable. I didn't know they could be apartments inside of an apartment building. Because I thought that apartment building was built mainly for young people here from Wayne State. And he said, "Yeah." He says, "They're working in the community." I thought, okay, well, if that's the case, then why isn't other apartment buildings, people living in them, that's, why isn't that called workforce housing? I don't get it. And man, oh, man, my eyes were opened up today. Yeah, I'm disappointed, to say the least. And when I found all this out, I thought, why, as a member of the TIF committee, why are we even up here? Are we wasting our time? Are we being, are we appeasing somebody or what? Now, I don't believe, you know, I know you guys just got done talking about your meetings and everything, but from what I've been told, what I've heard, you folks don't really make decisions. Because I'll tell you why. I think that comes from higher up, higher than the mayor. I really do. And that's called an action committee. And there's only certain people invited to hear what's going on. But, you know, if the TIF committee, like I said, if you can put apartments inside a work, apartment building, call them workforce housing, I don't even, I don't even know why we're here. I really don't. I'm disappointed. So that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Jim McKenzie, I'm just going to follow up since I got a few minutes for public comment. This is from the Nebraska Attorney General's outline of the Open Meetings Act. In the Supreme Court case of the City of Elkhorn versus the City of Omaha, the court indicated that while subcommittee is not defined in the Open Meetings Act, a subcommittee is generally a group within a committee to which the committee may refer business. In addition, making policy which subjects a subcommittee to the Open Meetings Act under 84-1409 apparently includes receiving background information about a policy issue to be decided. Again, to me, that sounds like you're receiving information in a subcommittee meeting. It's probably going to be filing suit in district court about one of these decisions to really get, get an answer, but that's from the Attorney General's outline of the Open Meetings Act. Here's a couple of statements from Grine versus the Board of Education of the School District of Fremont Supreme Court decision. "The Nebraska public meetings laws are statutory commitment to openness in government. As a result of open meetings, there will be development and maintenance of confidence as well as participation in our form of government as a democracy. The public can observe and with proper, within proper limits, participate in discussions and deliberation of a public body. Deliberation means the act of weighing or examining reasons for or against choices or measures and connotes not only collective discussion, but collective acquisition and exchange of facts preliminary to the ultimate decision." Sounds like a subcommittee meeting to me. "The basic argument for open meetings is that public knowledge of the consideration upon which governmental action is based is essential to the democratic process. The people must be able to go beyond and behind the decisions reached and apprised of the pros and cons involved if they are to make sound judgments on questions of policy and select their representatives intelligently. The presence of outside observers is an invaluable aid to make, making such informed, excuse me, making such information available for official reports. Even if issued, will seldom furnish a complete summary of the discussion leading to a particular course of action. The benefit of granting access to governmental meetings will annure a far larger segment of the population because those who do attend will pass the information obtained, pass on the information obtained. It is further argued that decisions which result in the expenditure of public funds ought to be made openly so that people can see how their money is being spent. Publicity of expenditures further serves to deter misappropriations, conflicts of interest, and other forms of official misbehavior." This is from the Supreme Court decision regarding open meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment period and move on to recommended actions at this time. I need to get approval for the consent agenda, removing item 16. Your Honor, I will be abstaining from the consent agenda. Oh, yeah, removing item 16 and moving it to the regular agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 16.
Second. Okay. Got a motion second, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Jensen, Langy, Webb, Beckman abstaining. Hildebrand motion carries.
All right, on to the approval of the full agenda, adding 16 to it.
And make the motion.
Second. A motion second, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, well, onto our special presentations of the evening. First one we'll read would be the, okay. It's going to be proclaim October 5th, or 5/11/2025 as Fire Prevention Week. Or October 5 through 11, I'm sorry. Read that for us here. Fire Prevention Week 2025, whereas the City of Norfolk, Nebraska is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Norfolk and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduce unique fire risk, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are all powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas the National Fire Prevention Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: my only listed products, charged batteries, safety, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small place and improperly used, such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, and exposing batteries to damage can result in a fire or explosion. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and the community, and whereas Norfolk's first responders, responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Week Prevention Week theme, "Charge into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves to remind us of the importance of use, of using charging, recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I Shane Clausen, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim October 5 through 11, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and encourage all residents, residents to be aware of their devices. Follow the buy, charge, and recycle safely approach, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of Norfolk's Fire and Emergency Services. And I see we have some people here today to come on forward to receive this, right? Chief Rogge's here and...
Where are we looking?
Pretty sure.
I am. Are you ready, Nick?
I was like, I do. I don't know.
Three, two, one.
Just smile. It's the kids. It's the kids.
Me too.
Thank you.
He wanted to engage, and then all of a sudden, he just spent, he, oh. Like here? I thought, dig, dig, dig.
Other than that, nobody else knew what they were talking about.
All right. Okay, we're on to the next one. Mark Clausen is here, I believe, to help with this. Right?
Several other members here tonight.
Okay. Maybe you can introduce everyone for us?
See, Wallace here.
And this is the Norfolk Morning and Noon Optimist Clubs. They're going to recognize a member of the Norfolk Fire Division.
My name's Mark Clausen. I am the president of the Norfolk Noon Optimist Club. Mayor, thank you, and city council members. We appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight. With me, I have Mike Getman, Jesse Roberts, Leanne Widholm, Troy Berryman, Joan Sausser, and Uzma Aslam, all members of our Norfolk Noon Optimist Club. By providing hope and positive vision, optimists bring out the best in youth, our community, and ourselves. Well, tonight, we're about the community. One of the purposes of an optimist club is to inspire respect for law. And one of the ways that we choose to do that each year is to recognize those in the community that, that are out there keeping us safe. And we had the opportunity during National Night Out to recognize a member of the Norfolk Police Division and Madison County Sheriff's Office. We had a member of the State Patrol join us for a meeting in August. And tonight, here, fittingly during Fire Prevention Week, we're here to recognize someone from the Norfolk Fire and Rescue. And I understand this is, it's always a surprise, which is, is nice.
Mark Clausen is here, I believe, to help with this, right?
Several other
Okay. Maybe you can introduce everyone for us.
See walls here.
And this is the Norfolk Morning and Noon Optimist Clubs. They're going to recognize a member of the Norfolk Fire Division.
My name's Mark Clausen. I am the president of the Norfolk Noon Optimist Club. Mayor, thank you, and city council members. We appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight. With me I have Mike Getman, Jesse Roberts, Leanne Widholm, Troy Berryman, Joan Sausser, and Uzma Aslam, all members of our Norfolk Noon Optimist Club. By providing hope and positive vision, optimists bring out the best in youth or community in ourselves. Well, tonight we're about the community. One of the purposes of an optimist club is to inspire respect for law. And one of the ways that we choose to do that each year is to recognize those in the community that are out there keeping us safe. And we had the opportunity during National Night Out to recognize a member of the Norfolk Police Division and Madison County Sheriff's Office. We had a member of the State Patrol join us for a meeting in August. And tonight here, fittingly during Fire Prevention Week, we're here to recognize someone from the Norfolk Fire and Rescue. And I understand this is, it's always a surprise, which is nice. I'm going to read something that was given to us by Fire Chief Tim Rogge in nominating this individual. I am respectfully submitting a nomination for firefighter/paramedic Scott Hoffman for the twenty twenty-five Firefighter Award from the Norfolk Noon Optimists. Scott has been with the Norfolk Fire family over ten years and began his career as a fire reserve. He is a lead-by example person who quietly exemplifies what we are looking for out of our team members at NFD. In the last couple of years, Scott has taken on additional responsibilities with our Fire Recruit Probationary Training Academy. He works together with representatives from each shift to make sure our new employees get the best possible training in their first four weeks of employment with us, which then sets the tone for their full six-month academy. What I appreciate most about Scott is the amount of integrity he possesses. Whether on or off duty, he handles himself with professionalism and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Scott also volunteers on the Hater Volunteer Fire Department and is a devoted family man. Our organization is full of amazing people and it brings me a great sense of pride to see one of them get special recognition on this day. Now Scott, will you would come forward, please?
Thank you.
Yes, come on in here. We'll get a picture here. Chief, you want to come up too?
All right, now we're on to item twenty-eight. Presentation by the Tree Advisory Board of the Green Leaf Award to a resident and to a business for outstanding planning of a variety of trees and landscaping.
All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and community members. I am Dr. T. Bush, and on behalf of the Norfolk Tree Board, it is my honor to present the twenty twenty-five Green Leaf Awards. This award recognizes residents and businesses who put extra care into their landscaping and create outstanding curb appeal that enhances our community. Nominations came from the city's staff and community members, and after review, the Tree Board selected this year's recipients. Each of you has shown pride in your property and your efforts make Norfolk more beautiful, welcoming, and inspiring for others. The winner of the Commercial Green Leaf Award is Freddie's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers and Seven Brew Coffee. And the winner of the Residential Green Leaf Award is Ellie Nordhues. Congratulations to all of our Green Leaf Award winners. Thank you for helping make our city a place we can be proud of.
Sorry, on to item number twenty-nine. Proclamation, proclaim October as National Pedestrian Safety Month. National Pedestrian Safety Month proclamation. Whereas the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has designated October as National Pedestrian Safety Month to raise awareness and improve safety for all roadway users. And whereas the city of Norfolk is committed to the safety and well-being of all who bike, who walk, bike, roll, or drive in our community. Recognizing the roadway safety is a shared responsibility. And whereas pedestrian safety remains a critical concern. Between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, Norfolk experienced forty-nine pedestrian-related crashes, resulting in four fatalities, nine serious injuries. While in twenty twenty-four, Nebraska recorded eighty pedestrian crashes statewide, including seventeen fatalities. And whereas impaired driving continues to endanger pedestrians with two hundred crashes in Norfolk between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty attributed to alcohol, and whereas both drivers and pedestrians play an essential role in safety, drivers are urged to obey speed limits, remain alert, avoid distraction, yield to pedestrians. While pedestrians are encouraged to cross the designated crosswalks, stay visible, avoid distraction, especially at night. And whereas everyone is a pedestrian at some point each day. And walking and rolling not only support health and well-being, but also contribute to a cleaner, more vibrant, and connected community. And whereas October forbids a timely reminder for the importance of pedestrian safety particularly during Halloween when families and children are active on neighborhood streets, often in unexpected places. Be it known, be it now, resolve that I Shane Clausen, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, along with the Norfolk City Council, do hereby designate the month of October twenty twenty-five as National Pedestrian Safety Month. And urge all citizens to join with government agencies, community organizations, and advocates and activities, events, and sanctuaries designed to be, to bring attention to the importance of pedestrian safety for all. Together, we can promote awareness, encourage safety practices, work towards creating safer streets for pedestrians of every age and ability. That's, I'm, someone, anybody here for this? Okay. All right, great. Come forward. We also have it in Spanish, so I'm going to try to read that. Give me a minute. The last one took me a little bit. Wait till I get through this one.
So, so mayors with me today are several members of the community, of the committee that are involved in our Safe Streets For All, our Complete Streets policy. It's led to our Safe Streets For All grants and our RAGE grant. So, a lot of effort. I'll just kind of, I'm not going to introduce you. I'll ask you all to introduce yourself and
Yep, Tim Rogge, Fire Chief.
Kay Frankavilla, it's on the committee.
Steve Ramis, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Ted McCarthy, Captain of the Police Department.
Taylor Mathis, Londonian.
Maitland, Parks and Recreation.
Will O'Leary, Street Manager.
We had one other that was here. She left. It was Erica Dekey, if I pronounced that last name right. She really wanted to be here, but got a little bit long, so she took off. But again, just a significant effort in the last several years towards safer streets for the public. And I appreciate the committee's efforts and the efforts of staff.
Okay, we're on to public hearing related action. Item number thirty, open a hearing at the request of Lucas and Amber Pinkelman to consider a zoning change from Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential on a property located east of the southeast corner of twenty-four oh-two East Norfolk Avenue. We'll have discussion at this time, and Val will lead us in that.
Thank you. I brought up the plan because we had a tough time trying to explain what we were doing because it wasn't really attached to a street. So, this little notch out that you hear, see down here in the southeast corner, that is what is essentially being zone changed because on number thirty-two, if this passes on all three readings going from Ag to RR, that will actually be attached, that little piece in the southeast corner will be attached to this shaded blue lot here. And that's why we need to do a zone change because this shaded blue lot is zoned rural residential. And this big piece that they're taking about a little less than a quarter of an acre off of the large piece and adding it to this. We needed to clean up that zoning so we didn't have two different zonings on one lot. And so that's why the zone change. And I can bring up the plat, too, if that would be easier for you to look at.
Any other questions for Val?
I'm just curious why it wouldn't just all be Ag if there's just one house there. What am I, why are they chopping out just that little section? I mean, like, go the other way instead of?
Well, to be an Ag-zoned lot, you need minimum forty acres, and it's about six right now. So, the rural residential lot was changed from Ag a few years ago when it was chunked off the big piece. And so, because it was too small for Ag at that point in time, yeah.
So, why was it designed?
That I don't know. Who came up with those lot lines, I'm not sure. This was the plat that was brought before us here a few years ago. And now they want this little corner to be added on to it and straighten out that southeast corner.
Anyone else like to speak on behalf in this public hearing? Okay, Planning Commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to consider a zoning change from A, Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District on property located east of the southeast corner of twenty-four oh-two East Norfolk Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with an eight to zero vote.
All right, we'll close the hearing. I need a motion to consideration ordinance number forty-nine, forty-seven, approving a zoning change from A, Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential at a property located in the east of the southeast corner of twenty-four oh-two East Norfolk Avenue.
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance five-nine-four-seven.
Second. We have a motion and a second, so we'll go into discussion. Val, any other further discussion for Val? Anybody from the public have anything to say on this item? Short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine, forty-seven carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
All right, a motion is second. We can have discussion. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine, forty-seven carries on second and third.
All right, on to item number thirty-two. Consideration Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-eight, approving the final plat of the Miller Pinkelmann's addition.
I'll make a motion for consideration of Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-eight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, which will go to discussion. Val, anything for Val on this?
I just put the plat up so that you can see that we're straightening out those lines at the southeast corner and just taking that little piece in that the zone change was dealing with.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-eight is adopted.
Right, item number thirty-three. An open a hearing at the request of Mary Ann Hozie to consideration of zoning change from I-two Heavy Industrial District to R-one One-Or-Two-Family Residential District on property addressed as eighteen oh-one South First Street. And we'll go to discussion. Val will lead us in with this again.
All right, thank you. I have brought up the map again. So, this is South First Street in Monroe. We're talking about the northeast corner where there is a house and South Side Salvage on one lot. After the family had some things happen here recently and they want to split up to the children. One gets the house and one would get the South Side Salvage. And so, that is what we're here today to do. So, this is similar to the one we just did. It's the zone change first and then the plat will follow. They want to zone change out of I-two, the house, into R-one so that would then be conforming to a residential. And they want to plat off that one acre around the house and then split those up. One thing that was brought up at Planning Commission, because the house is doing the zone change, if anything were to happen to the house or they wanted to add on or build another structure, the house would actually have the buffer yard requirement because they are the one doing the zone change. So, that will get filed at the county that they have the responsibility for that. And that was explained to the owners when we were going through the process. Because this is I-two, it's actually a hundred. And that's why the acre is, yeah, acre is about two hundred by two hundred. So, you have plenty of space even with a hundred-foot buffer yard.
Can is an acre the largest R-one lot you can have?
Correct, yes. But what is there is there. I mean, if you look at it, most likely the garage is going to be closer than that hundred feet. But it's there already. It would just be if something were to happen to it or they wanted to add on or change something, that would kick in.
So, just approximately, where is the line that would go across this property? Does it go all the way east to west?
No, let me bring up the, so you can see it here. So, it's about two hundred and forty feet off of First Street to the east. So, I can measure that for you. Yeah, because you'd have a twenty-five-foot front yard setback off of First Street if you were going that way. And if you had a hundred and forty feet, you still have a hundred and twenty-five feet in which to build stuff then if you have two hundred and forty feet worth of depth.
Are there questions? Any discussion? Discussion for the public, anybody? All right, can I get a Planning Commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to consider a zoning change from I-two Heavy Industrial District to R-one One-and-Two Family Residential District on property addressed as eighteen oh-one South First Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with an eight to zero vote.
All right, thank you. We'll close the hearing. Move on to item thirty-four. Consideration of Resolution Number fifty-nine, forty-eight, approving a zoning change from R-two to R-one at the property addressed at eighteen oh-one South First Street.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine, forty-eight.
Second.
Right, motion is second. Any discussion?
I do have just one quick question about, I don't have concerns with that heavy industrial with residential. I mean, I know we have the hundred-foot setback, but overall comfortable with that?
With the setback and they understand that that's there and it's been essentially operating that way for many years and it's the same family, I mean.
It's the same family for now.
Right. And hopefully the next person would understand that they're next to that until the salvage yards goes away, then, yeah.
Any other discussion? Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine, forty-eight carries on first.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty nine forty eight carries on first reading.
Seeing no objection, I would also make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings.
Second.
Right, a motion is second. Discussion. All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty nine forty eight carries on second and third.
Moves us to item number thirty five, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty five dash fifty nine approving the final plat of Ray Hozie subdivision.
I would make the motion for resolution number twenty twenty five fifty nine.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Discussion, please. Guess you're not going to have any. All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty nine is adopted.
Right, run item number thirty six. We're going to open a public hearing at the request of Bar MM LLC to consider a zoning change from A, or agricultural district to light industrial district on a property generally located one quarter mile south of the intersection of South Thirteenth Street and West South Airport Road. And we're open to discussion. Val will be leading us with that.
Okay. I brought this up. As you can kind of see, we're kind of on the south end of the airport here. This northern third, I will say, is already zoned I one. I one is all the way down here. The other two thirds currently is zoned ag. They are only requesting essentially this middle third to be I one zoned and remaining the, the forty acres down here in ag. It's kind of an approximation of where the lines are. Because they were over ten, all to over ten acres, a plat did not need to come before us to split that large piece into three smaller pieces. And so that's why we don't have a plat with this one. But we do have a zone change request for the middle to be the same as the top, as I one. And the applicants are here tonight if you have any questions for them.
Any discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Yeah.
My name is Rob Haake. I just have a question maybe more for the owner. But is there any idea of what's going to be planned for that, that property when they move to the lot industrial? I guess I feel better that it's not all the way to the south part because we, there's a soccer field right there and then we go into housing as you move south. So I would love to know if there's any plans as to how that property is going to be used. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Machla. I'm the owner of Bar MM. There is, there is no plans in the works now for it. It just seems to fit. The, the property is not very good for agriculture use. It has a lot of infrastructure in place already for, for some light industrial and Norfolk being short on light industrial property. It just is a good opportunity for the future, but we don't, we don't have any plans set for it right now. There's nothing in the works.
Do you, do you own the adjacent properties?
I own the north and the south.
Why are you not including all three?
Uh, because the south, in respect for the golf course and the soccer fields, it, you know, it, it just keeps it from, from any industrial getting down to that part. It's kind of that buffer zone to protect the housing and the golf course. So you don't have, you know, industrial property there. Cause the, the middle track goes down kind of more by Tyson is on the east side of the road and it's kind of right at his property line. Is actually, yeah, that's Tyson. If you go down a little bit, it's just about right at the gate of the parking lot. Yeah. That's kind of, that's the forty acres.
So to answer the, the question that was asked. If this gets rezoned, are you, are you intending to sell the property?
Yeah, it has the potential of being sold, yes. I have the north one listed for sale currently.
And, and no idea what may go in there?
No, I don't. I haven't made any plans for anything there.
With the airport being there, will there be building height restrictions?
Yes, the, any building that's done there, the FAA has to approve it. You have to go through there. We did, we did submit a building plan for just a commercial building, a sixty by a hundred building to make sure we could build there and we did receive approval from the FAA. And that was on the north, the light industrial track to the north. It was right in there, yeah. Any other question? Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, short title, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September sixteenth, twenty twenty five to consider a zoning change from A agricultural district to I one light industrial district on property generally located a quarter mile south of the intersection of South Thirteenth Street and West South Airport Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with an eight to zero vote.
All right. Please vote. What? Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. We're going to close the hearing. And now we need a motion to consideration of ordinance number fifty nine forty nine approving the zoning change from A agricultural district to light industrial district on a property generally located a quarter mile south intersection of South Thirteenth Street and West South Airport Road.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number five nine four nine approving a zoning change from agricultural to light industrial.
Second. All right, we have a motion is second. Discussion, please. Doubt we're going to have any here. Anybody else? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, a short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty nine forty nine carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Please vote.
All council members voting in the, in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty nine forty nine carries on second and third.
All right. Look to open a hearing, public hearing to consider the redevelopment plan for the Fox Ridge redevelopment project. Open that for discussion. Randy will lead this discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. This plan's been in front of you several times at the July seventh Community Development Agency meeting. The agency adopted the plan for the Fox Ridge redevelopment project and forwarded it to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission reviewed and held a hearing on the plan at their August fifth meeting and recommended approval of the plan on a six to zero vote. At the September second CDA meeting, the agency adopted a resolution recommending approval of the redevelopment plan to the city council. Redevelopment plan for the Fox Ridge redevelopment project is located in West Highway two seventy five, phase two redevelopment area and included in the agenda packet. It's about a six acre site outlined in red on the screen. It's north of Shepherd of Peace Lutheran Church and east of Thirty Seventh Street. This is planned as a twenty four lot, single family development. The first phase will include site clearance, grading sewer, water, storm sewer, paving, and other utilities and, and thereafter construction of single family homes is anticipated to be phased in over about the next six years with about four homes per year. The lot sizes and house sizes will be similar to the single family portion of the Norfolk redevelopment on Ferguson Street. Redevelopment project will include the extension of Silver Fox Avenue from Thirty Fourth Street and this existing group of homes along Thirty Seventh Street. That'll improve emergency access and connectivity. Project site will be extensively graded and, and buildable lots constructed on both sides of the extension of Fox Street. TIF brings the cost of developing the lots to approximately their market value of about thirty five thousand dollars per lot. Without TIF, the cost of the homes inclusive of, of the lot would need to increase by about fifty thousand dollars to offset the cost of developing lots. Value of the house and lot is anticipated to be around three hundred and ninety nine thousand each for a total project value of nine million seven hundred and fifty six thousand. The financing will not exceed one million seventy one thousand one hundred and eighty four dollars. I'll answer any questions and the redevelopment is also here tonight.
Randy, is the intention of this to come in and put all the infrastructure in right away?
Yes, my understanding is that the developer will put all the infrastructure in upfront.
Will that access be open then? Even if it's, the homes are not done, will the access be open to the neighborhood?
Yes, I believe Silver Fox Avenue will go through. See the developers coming up. He can correct that if I'm wrong.
Steven Romakers, Granville Custom Homes, four five one four Howard Boulevard, Columbus, Nebraska. Since this has been in front of you folks at several different, at several different occasions, I'm going to rely on what's contained in the four corners of the redevelopment plan. If you have further questions after some opposition might be raised to this, I can respond to those. But I think this has been hashed out enough times and I'm pretty, probably the best source is the material that we've been provided regarding the redevelopment plan. To that particular question, yeah, the, all the infrastructure will go in upfront or initially and that street will be open to public traffic at, at, at my cost. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Anybody from the public want to come forward? Please come forward now.
Jim McKenzie. I suspect this decision's already been made to approve this redevelopment plan and give two point three million dollars, two point three million property tax dollars to the developer to build twenty four, four hundred thousand dollar plus homes. Yes, it's two point three million property tax dollars, not the one point oh seven million listed in the agenda. The agenda leaves out the full property tax amount given away by omitting the interest that must be paid with property tax dollars. This two point three million in TIF amounts to giving the developer ninety five thousand dollars worth of property taxes for each and every home they built. I believe the decision to approve this plan was likely made long before this public hearing, possibly in closed door meetings that are now not recorded. My comments now in this public hearing are futile, but I'm going to say them anyway. Tiffing four hundred thousand dollar plus homes does not solve affordable housing needs of our community. It will not help those struggling to find quality, quality reasonably priced, safe and energy efficient homes. It will only put our public entities, the city, the county, the school, the NRD, the airport and others in deeper financial difficulties. It will only increase the property tax burden on those who can least afford it to make up for the property taxes given to this developer. I've heard some say tiffing four hundred thousand dollar plus or five hundred thousand dollar, million dollar homes frees up an affordable home that a buyer of the expensive home moves out of. To that I say hogwash. First of all, the person buying a four hundred thousand dollar home or even a million dollar home is not moving out of an affordable home. Secondly, in the rare chance that some person did move out of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home to buy a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, is it a good idea to put ninety five thousand dollars of property tax money in a new unaffordable four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home that made an old home with old wiring, old plumbing, old HVAC, poor insulation, a bad foundation available to someone with limited means to pay to fix any of that? It's a ridiculous justification. We have learned in our TIF committee meetings that we can build truly affordable new homes that lower income households can enjoy without being burdened with enormous long-term maintenance issues. Why waste our property tax dollars tiffing expensive, high-end homes for people of wealth? It's insanity. Let's use our property tax dollars carefully and limit the use to truly affordable quality new homes. Secondly, we already have builders building homes in this four hundred thousand dollar price range and less with more finished square feet than what I've heard these will contain without receiving any TIF. If you tiff these homes at ninety five thousand dollars each, get ready for the tidal wave of TIF requests from everyone. Because how do you say no to anyone else if you tiff these? There is no rationale for this decision and there's no policy to support this decision. I realize my comments won't make any difference, but it needed to be said. Our citizens deserve better. Thank you.
Right, any other discussion?
I would, I'd like to go personally on record and say that I am offended by Mr. McKenzie and his statements up here considering putting, putting any light into the matter that this has already been a predetermined thing outside of the city council because you know, I'm, I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm offended and I think that that is ludicrous that you would even assume, say that, Jim. And that's all I want to say. There.
All right. This is an open hearing. Is any other discussion?
I'll say just for the sake of public comments, so the public can hear how I came to this conclusion. As you look at this development and this has an adjacent neighborhood that was developed, I struggle some with the four hundred thousand dollar price point. But you have to think outside the box to think, what is TIF designed to do for your community? To develop areas that are, that's not attracting investments. The last home that was built at the end of this sewer line was in two thousand and four. So if we tell Mr. Romakers, no, we're not doing it, how much more revenue are we going to lose from this parcel? You can calculate what it's cost for this ground to stay bare for the past twenty one years. And then you can say, well, the cost to do it and what's the cost to not do it? They're both relevant. So I looked at the cost and the revenue that has not been captured because nothing has been done with it and we'll keep losing money on this development if nothing is done. So that was my thought process into it. I agree with Jim. We need to look at affordable housing. How can we use this TIF tool to create affordable housing? But I think there's two different, there's totally two different conversations.
Right, any other discussion?
This parcel of land was owned by two developers, at least prior to the current developer and they didn't find it feasible to build on it. And I actually am appreciative that the third builders is stepping forward and actually doing something for our community.
I would second what you, what you had just said here. I think when we talk about affordable housing and we hear the term lot, are we talking affordable housing as an opinion? What you think affordable housing is? Are we going by guidelines? Cause many times I think they get, they get pushed around. Is affordable, is it my opinion or is affordable a guideline? And I think when we, when we're here in this, in this body. And I think when we're here in this body, we need to talk about what the guidelines are, not what an opinion is, whether it would be my opinion or somebody else's. Because in my opinion, I can't tell you what's affordable for you or for anybody else. So I just say is that we need to stick to what is affordable on statute versus what our opinion on affordable is. So I just want to kind of clarify that, as far as, is it affordable opinion, or is it actual fact?
I think the number to go off on that is household median income. When you look at Norfolk's household median income, you kind of can come up with a number of what can be afforded over a 30-year mortgage. I'm not sure what that number is, but I'm sure it's around the 180-200 price point. It's going to be a hard number to hit. Not saying we can't do it, but I think the basis of affordability is built off the number of the household median income.
All right, any other discussion? Right, with that being, I'm going to close this hearing. Then in motion, consideration of resolution number 2025-60, approving the redevelopment plan for Fox Ridge Redevelopment Project.
Your Honor, I move consideration of resolution 2025-60 for the redevelopment plan.
Second.
Right, we have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Anyone else? Any further discussion?
Again, I'm agreeing with what was said earlier in that. I mean, I've lived in this town for quite a few decades now, and yeah, that piece of property over there has not been developed. I have to agree, you know, how much money are we losing by not developing it? The premises that have been presented, sometimes that this is tax on the taxpayer, is, in my mind, ludicrous that way.
All right. Any further discussion? Right, seen none. We have a motion of second, so please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, resolution number 2025-60 is adopted.
All right, we're going to the regular agenda now, and we'll go back to item 16 that was pulled off the consent and put on the regular. Consideration of resolution number 2025-56, authorizing Merit to sign an agreement between the Nebraska Department of Transportation and the City of Norfolk for the Highway 35 Roundabout Sculpture Project. Steve will be leading discussion on this. Oh, sorry, I need a motion first, sorry.
Your Honor, I move consideration of resolution 2025-56.
Second.
I have a motion of second now, Steve. Well...
Mayor Council, whenever we add any kind of infrastructure that we're going to be maintaining inside DOT right away, or basically anything that we would add as a community inside DOT right away, we do an agreement with the Department of Transportation like this. The last one we did was for the pedestrian activation system up at Benjamin Avenue and Highway 35. We essentially had the same agreement. The language within the agreement was wrapped around pedestrian signal systems, damage to those systems, relocation of those systems, maintenance of those systems. What you have before you here, again, is the agreement between the City of Norfolk and the DOT around the sculpture that will go in that roundabout. It just states that, you know, from the DOT's perspective, it's our sculpture as a community, as a city, and so they're looking to us for, you know, the responsibility of maintenance. We have to supply them design information around the footings, stipulates what we can and can't do, stipulates the responsibility during design, construction. Responsibility should, again, should the DOT ever remove the roundabout, that would be on us to remove the sculpture, sculptures ever damaged. We have the, we can either just remove it or fix it, but that's, in essence, what this is. It puts, the DOT isn't going to take any responsibility for that structure. It comes back to us on the city. So, if there's questions, I'd certainly answer those.
Well, Steve, you and I have had many discussions on this statue and the safety at that roundabout. I guess I want to make it public that we are working on things to make it safer for the pedestrians or the bike riders on that, and there are things in the works there, but the height, I guess, of that sculpture is what concerns me with those pedestrians, so...
You know, it's, it's my opinion that I think the sculpture is actually going to slow traffic down coming in and out of that roundabout. Yeah, potentially it's going to give them something to gawk at, but when you're going into that roundabout, you're looking through the roundabout and around the roundabout. We don't really see, I'm not aware of a conversation either within this state or nationally about median artwork, median sculpture work contributing to accidents within a roundabout movement. To your comment there, yes, you know, we've had, I think, some requests from yourself and maybe one or two other councilmen to address the signage, pedestrian safety, pedestrian enhancements at that roundabout. We did send, we did prepare some information about signage improvements and sent that to the Department of Transportation. They did approve that. Along with approving that, they said that they would actually install the signs for us there. So they're going to acquire the additional signage and install that. We'll monitor that. Should that, for some reason, just cannot be sufficient or adequate, there is another level where we would come back in there and look at, like, the RFPs, those rapid beacons, and add those in there as well. But we kind of take, we step it up, you know? If a lower-cost improvement satisfies the need, that's where we would stop.
Do you know when the department will be putting in those, the new signage?
I have not, I have not heard that, Councilman, when that would occur. Since they've approved it, I mean, it's a pretty simple installation, so I would assume quickly, but I can find out and get you an answer.
Any other questions for Steve? Any questions for the public?
Jim McKenzie, one question on insurance. There's a requirement for the city to provide insurance. I was just curious what that cost is. And then, secondly, I realize you've got it approved from state DOT. I did pull the Federal Highway Administration, U.S. Department of Transportation Information Guide on Roundabouts off the website, and under landscaping, it says the landscaping of the roundabout and approaches should, and then it's got a list, and one of the items in the list is minimize introducing hazards to the intersection, such as trees, poles, walls, guide rails, statues, or large rocks. I would think a 28-foot-tall chunk of steel might be a hazard. Thank you.
You know, I was just down in Lincoln on Saturday, drove through the intersection, 14th Street and, oh, is it Superior, maybe? And they have done just the opposite. They have actually put in a lot of shrubbery, a lot of artwork, to slow that traffic, so that way, you can't just, you look, you know, a quarter mile away and see it's clear and just continue your speed. You have to slow down. So they've actually implemented both shrubbery and artwork into that intersection.
In the design of roundabouts, just size, turning movement, large truck traffic is certainly considered as part of that. There is concern about obstacles if it's a tighter roundabout and your truck traffic has difficulty making that turn. In this particular case, I think the inside of that roundabout's 110 feet, and I don't remember the outside, but dimensionally, turning activity is not an issue inside that roundabout.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Lyle Led Operations Manager for the City of Norfolk. To answer Mr. McKenzie's question, I don't have the cost for the insurance, but we're constantly adding stuff to our insurance policy and removing it frequently. I'll look into it and get back to you.
Any more discussion on item 16? Right, seen none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, resolution 2025-56 is adopted.
Right, on item number 40, consideration of ordinance number 5941, adopting an amended and restated firefighter's pension plan effective July 9, 2024.
I'd make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5941.
All right, I have a motion and a second. We'll go into discussion here. Randy will be leading this with discussion.
Yes, this was on the last city council agenda, along with the city's three other retirement plan restatements. These restatements were driven by Emeritus changing document providers. They went from FIS to FT Williams, and they wanted all of their plans restated to the new form. So normally, this wouldn't happen until, I think it's July 28, is when we're scheduled to get restated again. You have to do that every six years and incorporate all the changes to your plan into a new plan document once every six years. We'll still have to do that in 2028. This is done just to meet Emeritus's desire to have all their documents in the same format, and this makes, incorporates all the changes since we did it a couple years ago. It replaces Lyle Led with Jessica DeVore, as Plan Administrator, Trustee, and City Council Designated Retirement Committee Member, and makes additional changes. That became effective July 18, 2024, expanding the definition and coverage salary and changing employee contribution rates. And those contribution rates, along with the city's contribution rate, go up October 1, 2025, and October 1, 2026. The city's rates go up 1% each of those dates. The employee contribution rates go up more. I'd answer any questions.
Randy, I got one question. So we changed personnel from Lyle to Jessica. Is there any chance, just for clerical reasons, that we could just put a title of a city employee versus a particular individual?
I believe, at least on the trustee's agreement, there has to be a named individual. We might be able to do that as a title on the other documents, but I think the trustee has to have a named individual.
Any other questions for Randy? I can give a short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to adopt an amended and restated firefighter's pension plan as required under section 161020 through 161042 of current state of Nebraska statutes, to appoint the city council-designated members of the firefighter's pension plan retirement committee, to appoint plan administrators, to grant authorization to sign documents, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5941 carries on first reading.
Hearing no opposition, I make a motion. We suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5941 on second and third?
Second.
A motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5941 carries on second and third.
Right, we're on item number 41. Consideration of ordinance number 5950, creating a paving district number 522, providing for an extension of Legacy Drive and extension of North Macintosh Road, all located in the northeast corridor of the section 23, township 24, north, range 1 west of the 6th parallel medium in the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5950.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Any discussion will be led by Steve.
Val, I had sent you an email with a copy of the boundary for this. If you could bring that up, please. Mayor and Council, Val's in the process here, bringing up an image that we'll show you. Go to page 2 of that, Val. We'll show you the boundaries, through all the work to be done here. Anticipated as part of Phase 7 for Legacy Ben. North is to your left, so this is oriented east to the top of the page, north to the left, south to the right. This would be an extension of the Legacy Ben multifamily housing project. As a function of that, this is an extension of, I don't remember specifically, Legacy Drive, I think it is. And then also, it would extend Macintosh Road south, and that would tee into Legacy Drive. So that is the paving district before you. It would be the paving within those colored boundaries. Some of this is a function of discussions that have been ongoing here for about the last two years. There's been conversation by the Legacy Ben community, I'm not going to say requesting additional access, but commenting on access. The developer just was not ready to come back into the community and continue Legacy Ben. More recently, as we've continued to encourage them to come back for the extension of Legacy Drive and the connection there to Macintosh, they are ready. They submitted a letter here requesting the paving district, the water district, the sewer districts, and so that is what we have before you here today. Again, this district would be followed by water and sewer, and then also, obviously, would be followed by construction there of Phase 7 and those three additional multifamily Not to put Randy on the spot, but Randy, there is, as you guys have, as council, guys and gals, have questions. Randy's has some history that he could talk about between the districts. There would be a TIF agreement as well. The schedule here is to get the districts in place, start, move the design forward, and then sometime here in December, when you're contemplating the TIF agreements, that in conjunction with those is when we would get permission to advertise this project and/or award the project. Obviously, the developer has an interest in both the districts as well as TIF, and would not want to move forward with the districts if the TIF was not approved. So this is a stepped process, and I think there can be some discussion around that today in terms of how we're intending to structure this. So that's what's in front of you. You know, I'd be happy to answer any questions around this you have, as well as Val and Randy, and any other staff that may have participated in some of the conversations to date, so... to date.
Any questions for Randy?
Steve, what's the cost of this paving district?
This paving district is estimated at $976,000.
$976,000. And so, assuming they come forward with a TIF ask for this, it makes this development unique because unlike what Raymakers is doing, going to a bank, upfronting all those costs at a market interest rate, incentivizing the developer to get it done. Here, we are playing the bank. We're giving them a prime interest rate to get this road connected. I have a hard time supporting this, given the fact of the history of this development.
Randy, you want to provide some background into the structure that we've been using on Legacy Bend in terms of both the assessments and the TIF?
Yeah, and this use of special assessments and TIF is something we have only done to date in Legacy Bend. I think it was back in 2017 when we were trying to get someone to come in and develop that area and we're trying to get housing built. We were going back and forth with various developers. We weren't having any success attracting anybody to develop this particular property. And they came to us with a proposal wanting us to actually either place the TIF or hold the TIF. And we wouldn't do that. And they said, oh, we can't come up with that much financing. If we can't get financing through the city somewhere or another, we won't be able to do this project. And as a compromise solution, we decided we would do special assessment districts for this. So we wouldn't have to do what Raymakers is doing and go to the bank and borrow the money to put in the infrastructure. And we would do the special assessment districts and issue the TIP bonds also, so they would have the taxes coming back to help them pay off those specials. So this is something we did back when we started this with phase one and two of Legacy Bend. Like I say, I think those were, I think it was 19, around 2017, 2018, in that timeframe. And that's worked fairly well. They've kept their assessments current. When they sell a lot, they've paid their assessments off. These lots aren't planned to be sold, so they will hold these assessments and pay them off as they come due. So they've been holding up their end of the bargain. And in order to get Macintosh Road in like we've been wanting to do, that's what they've requested be done on this particular phase also.
Randy, what would be the term of the bond?
The TIF bond or the...
The assessment.
The assessment bond. I don't know if we decided that yet, Steve. I'm trying to think if we've actually...
We haven't decided that yet.
I'm guessing they want it long.
I would imagine it would be a 20-year bond.
Yes, I would expect they would want it long because they're not wanting to come up with that cash quicker than they have to.
I don't know, I'm hesitant to, with this development, do anything. If they have to come to us to be the bank, because they don't feel like a bank would give them money, it kind of is telling of the whole project. And I have concerns with that. So I just want to be on the right side of this and make sure that what is said is done. And I'm not so sure that us giving them the easiest path forward to get this done is shown to be the best solution for them, so.
Justin, I would comment on, I know like for Corey and myself, this is going to make a lot of people happy in our ward if we connect this road. There's a safety factor in here. There's snow removal factor in here. And besides that, this developer has been, in my opinion, has been smeared in places that he hasn't been, he hasn't done anything wrong. He's up to date on all of assessments. He's done everything we've asked him to do. He has done absolutely nothing wrong. And when we may have maybe set him up for something that maybe is a difference of opinion for some people, is by giving him the assessments to begin with. If I was in his shoes, I would look at it from a developer standpoint. This is the original agreement that we had. This is how I was going to finish this development. And I look at it as is that maybe this is an exception to the rules where we need to continue on to get this road done, to get more apartments in, to get more housing in. Maybe this is one exception to the rule. As far as the TIF goes, that's not really what's in front of us tonight. The TIF ask will come later, like Randy said, in December. And when that TIF asks come, we can put some parameters in there if that's what you choose to do. But right now, this is about a paving district, sewer district, a water district. That's what this is about tonight. So I'm not trying to be controversial with you. I'm just saying is that what we have in front of us is this. And in December, we could put some parameters in for the TIF ask. Is that by this milestone, you have to have this completed. By this milestone, you have to have this completed, as far as his ask. So I'm just going to come at you from a Ward One councilman, because this is it. This is what I represent. Those people would be nothing but absolutely astounded if we could get this through for easier transportation and safety.
I think where the problem started with this is what was first proposed as a project. So I think it's got a bad rap because the first proposal was community gardens, parks, R1, R2. It was supposed to be a built-out neighborhood. And they've done nothing to touch the R1. So I understand this isn't a part of the TIF, but this is directly tied to it. So I don't want to vote for this, making them think that I support us holding the assessments and holding the debt for their infrastructure. There's other options that we have as a community to put in this infrastructure, and we haven't explored that.
Just looking back at a couple of the districts, we've been doing 10 years on the district assessments.
So you could gap pave it?
We tried that. That was already brought up and discussed and it was shot down.
By who?
For us, for us to...
For the engineering side of things.
For us to gap pave that, yeah. I mean, we'd have to go through an eminent domain process to acquire the street right of way to pave it. That would be an additional cost to put that in there. You know, if we can work with the developer and get them to the point where they're ready to plat that, that would be a dedicated right of way and we wouldn't have to purchase it. But that's the biggest obstacle to gap paving. That would just be the process of eminent domain.
I guess I would like to reinforce what Corey had mentioned, too. We have to remember what we're voting on here and what we're discussing. We aren't discussing TIF here right now. We're talking about creating a paving district in the other districts that are there. So we wish that we would stay on subject.
The districts, just to talk about, once the districts are created, so there's four agenda items here tonight, all related to this, paving district, water district, sewer district, and then the engineering agreement. Engineering on this is, I didn't break it down in the dollars, is five, I think it's $129,500 contract, five-point, it's a 5.8% design fee. It's even less than that. That would be the combined design fee for water, sewer, and paving. From the perspective of at least getting it designed as a step, you're never going to get something designed at that price. That's an excellent, excellent price for design services. Construction, engineering, inspection, services are 6.8% of that. The process here, if we approve the districts tonight and approve the engineering and we get the street designed, and for whatever reason, things hit a wall here as we start, as we hit the TIF conversation. And we were to pursue eminent domain for purposes of putting in the street in, we would have a street designed and ready for construction. So I do think, I do think the process of moving things forward is good. There's always an opportunity, like I say before, we would move forward and award a contract to stop the process. And I can answer any questions around that.
Randy, what's the rate of interest on a bond right now, a 10-year bond? You say 4%?
The rate of interest on the special assessment bonds?
Yeah.
Won't know that until we issue the bonds, but I'd say if we were doing them today, probably around 4%.
Have you ever, legally, what can the city charge? So I know like there's a judgmental rate of like 6.26 right now?
14%, I believe, is the delinquent interest rate that we can charge on special, well, I think that's what you have to charge on special assessment delinquencies, as set by statutes. What we normally do is guess at what we're going to pay for interest rate on the special assessment bonds, because we issue those bonds after we have assessed the project and give them 50 days to pay it. They can pay it off 50, or they pay off in the first 50 days they don't pay interest on. So we sometimes get a lot of payments in that period of time. I doubt if we will on this, because I don't think they're wanting to pay these. They're wanting us to act as the banker. And then we issue the bonds, so interest rates can go up and down on you a little bit in between then and now. And we normally combine in one big bond issued, the various special assessment districts we have, notes outstanding for them, and we've assessed. So we won't actually know that bond interest rate for a while from now. But we take a guess at that and round it up to the next percent. So if we thought our interest rate was going to be 4.2% on that bond, we would round that up to five and then add a percent, so we'd charge six.
Six.
Say again?
Would you say that last sentence was?
We would. If we thought we were going to issue debt for four-something percent, we would set the interest rate on the special assessments at 6%. And then, when we levy those assessments at six, we still don't know what our bond interest rate's going to be, but hopefully it won't move against us enough to cause us to go negative on our interest rate. That happened a couple times back in the early 80s when there was some wildly crazy quick swings in interest rate where we got caught on the wrong side. Normally, we're making more on the interest rate on the special assessments than we are paying on the special assessment bond. But that's a little bit of a guess, because like I say, you don't know the time you're setting that. And so we put a little bit in there to protect us from changes in interest rate. We put a little bit in there to protect us from our, basically pay us back for our administrative costs. Because if these guys go and stretch us out for the full length of the bond, each one of those years, we're accruing the cost of collecting their specials, turn around and making those as payment on their special assessment bonds. We've got cost of doing that. And if for some reason they pay those off early, that interest rate ceases and we quit making that spread that we hope will be about a percent on those bonds that will cover our administrative cost.
See, Corey, Jim, I know this isn't a TIF conversation, but we know that the developer is going to be coming for that. And this is directly tied to that development. And so you have to decide if you want to create this paving district, because the only one to do it is if we'll carry the bond on their development TIF project. I think it's absolutely correct to talk about that, to see if you agree as a council, do we carry the debt for their infrastructure like we've done for nobody else? I'm all for, they want to come here and put a TIF application. I say go to the bank, borrow the money. It's a free market. Go play in it.
And the path, just to further describe the path, if we create the districts tonight and we get to a point where we're not wanting to move a TIF forward and the developer's insistent on that, we can stop, we can stop the districts, rescind the districts. We would still have paving plans in our hands, paving plants for paving water and sewer, but that would, you know, again, if it stops...
Yeah, regardless of what we do, it's important we figure out how to get this road moving forward. That's what is a task. And I think that's what Corey's talking about. And I know for Corey, it's a big deal. So at the...
Justin, what's the cost not to do this? It's just going to, the development is going to be at a standstill, just like it has been.
You have a hard argument to say it's not going to be happening.
That was your argument earlier tonight with Raymakers Division. What's it cost not to do it?
You're not going to develop the R1 housing that we need. You're not.
I can't say that.
Well, it hasn't shown that any road that's been put in has not developed R1 housing. Okay. I would say, actually, Corey, if I was to go back in hindsight, Macintosh should have been phase one. The initial development approved through this council should not have been approved, in my opinion, without Macintosh being hooked up immediately. And I think it's hurt this development.
Well, I don't think anybody disagrees with that, but hindsight being 2020, it was 100% right. That should have been put through right off the bat. I think we all agree upon that, and that's why it's been so much heartburn for all of us talking about it, because it should have been done off the bat and it didn't. So we're here tonight to finish this conversation up, so let's keep moving forward and talk about this. Good points by everyone. Anybody else have any more discussion? Come up now.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Dale Coy is my name. Some of them have been answered already, but I know the number was brought up, $976,000. That's just for the paving alone or is that for all the districts together?
That's just the paving.
Yeah.
I can tell you here if you want to know.
Well, you'll probably bring that up when you introduce those others. But Randy, I was curious, what percentage of phase one and two that have already been given TIF? What has been their completion rate? Are those two phases all complete?
No, they're far from it.
Like a percentage, what percentage?
The single-family homes in that phase two area and some of them in the phase one area that have been platted and have the infrastructure in, I think there's probably at least a dozen of those that have not been...
So what do you think, 30, 40% of their obligation in single-family homes?
I'd say probably around half or a little less than half would probably be my guess, a little less than half.
And I'm just guessing, we've never done anything like this except for Legacy Bend. This is setting a precedent.
The special assessments and TIF both, we've only done for Legacy Bend.
Yeah, okay. And like I said, I've sat there with both of you guys and I know you have concerns of egress in that development. And I know you're getting pressure from the folks in that area. But my question is, I know you said you're going to make a lot of people happy in Ward One, but what about the people that live in the Meadow Ridge and the Blue Stem area where you're dumping all that traffic back into their neighborhoods? I would question that those are... I would question that those are well-planned, established neighborhoods and now you're dumping them with your problem. So I think you're just moving the problem, you're not solving the problem.
That, that was a big discussion Dale in, in our meetings of traffic and which way it's going and whether East Maple should be continued out also and, and having more than just one, one direction.
Because they're already having issues there. They're talking about putting a stoplight in there at the.
Yeah, I know Steve could probably hit on that as a stoplight at Benjamin.
So certainly, certainly the connection to Macintosh has been part of the plan. You know, that, that was going to happen at some point.
Phase 7.
And like they say.
Yeah, Phase 7. You're not going to make it to 3 or 4. They haven't even fulfilled their commitments on 1 and 2.
Right. I mean, Fa- Phase 7 being whatever phase of the multifamilies where they are now. The, um, and then there's the connection on, on Maple. And, and, and I would tell you, people are going to want to go, you know, as we looked at this and looked at where, where, where the connections are, where people are going to want to go, people are going to, you know, they're wanting, if they're, if they're headed to Benjamin, they're wanting to go, they're going to want to go north. They're not going to want to go east to, to Norfolk Avenue or to, I'm sorry, Victory Road. Certainly, both of those are, are conversations that are going on. Right now, the developer, you know, as we've had conversations with the developer, their interest is in the multifamily. They're willing to come back to town and, and help us extend that and get that connection onto Macintosh Drive. Certainly, we're going to continue to have conversations around Maple and how we can structure Maple and get that in sooner than later. But we recognize both are important and both are part of the traffic process over there is a signal possibly at Benjamin Avenue and Macintosh in the equation. Yes, you know, we're going to need to do a study on that. Both Benjamin Avenue and, and Macintosh, Benjamin Avenue and Victory Road. You know, we need to, we need to look at both of those. So we do see a, an intersection study coming that would, that would start to look at those.
I know that's off topic, but it's a legitimate concern.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's all opinions at this point.
We, we are, as a function of this, we would put, we don't show it right here on Macintosh. Let's see. Lansing, is that Lan- Lansing Lane? I believe we're considering a three-way stop there from a, just from a, a traffic flow so we're not inundating.
I think in a Safe Roads, another Safe Roads discussion, you'd already talked about pedestrian crosswalks at Benjamin there with the college being there and the apartments being there. So, I mean, I'm sure that's in the works, but I guess in my opinion, you're not solving the problem, you're just moving it. I kind of lean towards Councilman Webb's. I'd rather see you do gap paving, do eminent domain because I don't ever see that land being developed and I don't ever see that developer developing that and I don't think we'll ever see our money. I think it's crazy to, to put faith in somebody that hasn't fulfilled their obligation already.
And, and one of the conversations we've had and we're pursuing is, you know, do we purchase that as a city? We've been having that conversation here for about the last nine months. Is that a parcel that we purchase from the developer? And then we put the street in, you know, we TIF ourselves, we put the street in and make lots available to smaller builders. You know, currently, the build market is held by the Romakers. They develop it and they build it or, or when, White Cliff Development, they develop it, they build it. We don't have a lot of availability here for a small builder to just go buy a one-off lot and build. And so that's part of the conversation here that we're, that we're exploring.
Just, I'll just leave this go, but just in my opinion, ultimately, the taxpayers in Norfolk are going to end up paying for that road one way or another. I'd rather be in the driver's seat than be independent, sitting in the passenger seat, so.
Dale, just to hit on that a little bit on, and, and I'm not going to go whether we should do gap paving or not. I think it's an excellent discussion of what, how we should do that. And, and I think you have a valid point of, we're going to pay for it one way or another, right? Whether it's TIF or, or separate. But going back to the discussion of, of Macintosh and, and heading out on Legacy Bend where there's only one exit out of that neighborhood of, I will say Macintosh and shoving some traffic out there has been a big discussion of how much traffic would go there and, and the speed because of how long Macintosh is. And, excuse me, and the possibility of additional stop signs like we did on Legacy Bend to try and slow them down over there too. It, it's not, it's, it's not one of these that we, I, I would say that we're necessarily taking lightly. I mean, it, it is a concern of how fast that traffic could go and, and obviously, we're going to have more traffic going down that road. There's, there's no doubt about it. I think we all recognize that. How do we, how do we help keep it slow at least?
But if we're just band-aiding it, why wouldn't we just put asphalt in on Maple?
That, that's been part of a discussion too, to be honest with you.
Like I said, I think it's just a shell game. You're moving the problem into another neighborhood instead of concentrating on it.
Certainly would like, um, well, I'll be, I'll be honest, I was a strong advocate for it too. And I think Webb brought it up many a times also of, of putting in Maple at the same time as Macintosh and, and whether we find any validity in helping that, that way also. And, and so with that sparked discussion of do we, do we try to purchase some of this land and do some of this ourselves as a city to try and entice developers to start developing? Because we're not seeing Legacy Bend do exactly what they wanted to on the very first development.
Right.
We, we all see that, we all notice it. And, and I would, I would also say if we didn't set a precedence, but maybe learned a lesson of what we should or shouldn't do in a, in a development. But it, it's an ongoing discussion. I, I don't disagree with you on Maple also.
Well, I just, I just have, you know, a couple of questions and I appreciate your time. So thank you.
Jim McKenzie. First of all, well, first of all, I've heard a lot of this discussion about, we've had a lot of discussions about this already. Must have been in closed, closed sessions. But it's, it's real, it's a frustration.
You're not going to sit here and assume and slander us like that.
I'm not slandering you.
By telling us, by, by sitting up there and saying, no, just a minute, I got to say this. I think Jeff had a point and you don't come up here and assume and say that things are decided behind closed doors. Don't be doing that, Jim.
I'm just saying that you said you've had discussions about this.
You made a comment that you can't believe that we're doing this.
I said you're having discussions, you said you had discussions. You talked about big discussions and.
Yes, legal subcommittee discussions.
Your divestment, your decision on legal is subject to determination. So first of all, I would say this design is, is a failed design. I mean, you put all the apartment buildings on the back of this development. All the traffic has to go through residential areas from the beginning. I mean, you look at any other development, your apartments are right by your corridors. They're not clear back and forcing, you know, 300, 400 units of apartments through residential areas. And we're going to just add to that with this. Second of all, the city has a lot of property tax dollars, taxpayer dollars at risk in this development already. I'm assuming, tell me, somebody tell me if I'm wrong, that most of the paving and the water and sewer were paid for by the public.
The paving we put in in those early phases with special assessments.
So paid for by the public but assessed against the property. So the public's dollars are at risk.
I'm guessing they're not at much of a risk anymore. I would agree more with your statement early on. But now we've got enough of those specials paid off. I think we would be able to foreclose against the lots and recover our funding with no problem.
But I think it's important to understand you're putting public dollars at risk. This is putting public dollars at risk and you're giving TIF on top of it. When I look at this, I'm seeing $1.7 million of public money that you're going to put into paving, water, sewer, and engineering. Somebody can tell me if those numbers are wrong.
Jim, just for clarity, so you're saying when we assess a parcel of ground that is owned by you and you have to pay that special assessment for your water, sewer, streets, if that's public dollars?
Yes, I mean, you're not paying for this, the, the tax, the developer's not putting the dollars out, the taxpayers are.
The developer that owns all those multifamily houses that were assessed is paying that.
But all, how about all the ground that is undeveloped that we've paid for?
Right, those, those are, those are, there's certainly other phases of the project.
So those are at risk.
The project in front of us, though, is a multifamily project that they've been very successful with. And they own, they own those, so they own, they own the special assessment.
How much of the $1.7 million that you're going to put forward for this phase is going to be assessed? What percentage of this?
I'd say 90% of it's going to be assessed back to that property owner.
Okay. And hopefully the apartments get built. If they don't, then we're stuck with it, right?
I believe he is still stuck with it and has to pay off those assessment bonds. We're not.
Well, well, when you say he, it's, it's an LLC, right? Or is there any personal guarantees on that?
I can't necessarily answer. I mean, there's, there's limited risk in those assessments.
My, my point is, my point is it's public dollars at risk and we're giving TIF on top of it. I just want to make sure that we're understanding that. The other point I want to make is the David Street Extension to Victory Road that goes across to Maple. I believe that was supposed to be put in in a previous phase, correct?
As, as part, Val and Randy can talk a little bit more, but as part of their original TIF plan there, yeah, they had, I don't know, multiple, multiple, seven, eight, nine phases in there. They never advanced the phase where that road was supposed, you know, would have gone in.
That was part of a phase.
It's, no, that's never been platted out.
It's not part of this phase.
It's not part of this phase.
Part of a previous phase, I'm pretty sure.
We're not talking about the previous phase.
But it, it's unplatted. If it was platted, we could do gap paving because the right-of-way would be there, but that's unplatted.
But it's a point that when I looked at those developments, I'm pretty sure that was already in a previous phase.
You're talking about Maple Avenue, Jim?
Yes, because of the connection across.
That was part of Phase 2.
That was part of Phase 2.
And I believe it was Phase 2 and C and 2B that were on the east side of Maple Avenue towards Victory Road. One of those was, I think, 2023 was when the Phase 2B was supposed to go in and 2024 was when, well, 2024, I believe, is when those lots were supposed to be sold by then. So if that would have proceeded as they had planned originally, that street would be in because they would be selling lots that are currently unplatted on the east side of what's going to be Maple Avenue. This would have went as planned. Those lots would have been in and the street would have been in in front of them.
But Val, would you mind bringing it up? Madison County GAS. I, I'd have to go back and look at it. I thought that was included in a redevelopment contract that we approved for that section. Now, again, we're off subject, it doesn't matter.
I've got it up on the screen. Where Maple Avenue had one across, I believe 2B is on the east or the west side of that and 2C on the east. And those homes were supposed to be built and sold in 20, by the end of 2023 and 2024.
What, I mean, what's before you now is going to take all that traffic, and I shouldn't say all. It looks to me like most people are going to try and go out Benjamin. But if that's the case, you're going to have, I'm not sure what those are, 24 units per apartment? Does anybody know what, how many number of units?
20, the new one's 2022.
22, so you got 11 units now with adding the three that are part of this. So you're looking at, you know, 250 units, but you're now going to push out on Macintosh Road.
Correct, and that's like, and that's been the master plan here for this development. And like I think was mentioned up here by a couple of council members, we should have made that connection back in Phase 1 or Phase 2, and then it would be there.
Again, it's, yeah, you're, you're going to have, you've got an issue already with all that traffic heading east.
Things slows down because we had COVID and we had interest rates go up. It totally slowed this project down. The project would have been on pace to do what it said it would have done had those things not happened. So unfortunately, those things took place.
I don't think we can blame COVID on this. I don't think COVID had any.
It had a lot to do with one of their apartment complexes because they couldn't get supplies for it. And they sat on it for a long time on a construction.
But COVID's been gone over for a long time.
But that's what slowed this down initially back in 2020. This is a 2017 project. 2020, the first apartment complex got slowed down greatly, it did. You couldn't get electrical supplies, Jim.
This is another $1.7 million of public money.
Talking about a development, it's frustrating. Yes, we're all frustrated tonight. I, I'm, I'm just as frustrated, the road's not in as you are. Needs to be in. The other road should have been put in, you know, we should, it didn't happen. So we're here tonight to find a solution. Let's work together to find a solution instead of pulling fingers at everybody. We don't have that choice right now. We got to figure this out. Uh, it used to be when people were putting apartments up in Norfolk, we got excited about it. I remember that. It was five, six years ago. We were like, who's going to come to our town and build apartments? We didn't know who was going to do it. We didn't have anybody here who wanted to do it. So lo and behold, some people from outside of town, they read our housing study, decided to come in here and put some apartments in. We were excited about this project at one time. It was a big deal for the city of Norfolk to have apartments going in, R1, R2, R3. It looked like a really interesting development because it was incorporating R2 and R1 together, doing some interesting things with some R1 housing that made the smaller lots and, you know, we thought this is going to be. And so now we're at a point where things have changed. Didn't move along as fast as we thought it was going to move, or the developers thought it was going to move. They have stayed current on their assessments. They will be having to pay any sort of TIF pledge that comes up against that bond. They'll have to pay, cover it. They just can't let that bond payment not go unpaid. So there are, there is risk associated with that. So I plead you guys tonight to move forward with one way or the other. At least if it doesn't go, at least we have to go back to the drawing board and figure out another way to do it. But continuing to sit here and hash up everything is not getting anywhere. Let's get to the decision.
My point is it's public money that we're putting at risk for somebody that we're going to give TIF on top of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would say the benefit of this right now, and I think Steve kind of stated that, was by doing the extension districts, we have a plan in place, whether we do a gap paving, we do some other way of, of doing this. At least we have, at, at the cost of this, it's in our hands, right? It's not in anybody else's hands. So at least we have that. And whether the TIF goes through, whether, whether anything happens after this, at least we have something in our hands. Go ahead, Steve.
All right, Steve C. Hi again. You were at a TIF meeting where you admitted it was Norfolk's only failed project. I live out in that area and I was also at the city council meeting one night when I agreed with you. It probably needed to be built, the road, you know, extended through. If it's the same developer, I don't have no trust in the guy. He didn't finish what he was supposed to do to begin with. But if the road ends up getting built, it's true, it's, you gotta, oh my God, the traffic along there, those kids are going to fly through there. So therefore, I would, looking at that up there, I would suggest going up north on Macintosh, maybe some speed dump, speed bumps, stop signs. And, uh, yeah, I'm just, I have no confidence in the developer one, one bit. I agree with you. All right.
So I have a question for Randy. Is the developer current on his assessments from the streets that have been put in so far?
Yes, he's current on his assessments and he's been paying.
So we're not losing money on this? He, he is, the assessments are being paid?
Yes, and I think we've got enough paid on these special assessments that we're really not at any risk anymore.
Well, and the second thing I have to say too is, you know, you look at this development, you all see the map in front of you. We need a second road in there just for safety reasons. That needs to go out to the north. If you're, if you're tucked back in there in that northwest corner and you have only one way out, out to Victory Road, you need a second road out there. And this. And this develop, this particular phase of his development connects Macintosh to the north, and I think for safety reasons, it needs to be done.
I think, Steve, I could get behind a lot more if we would have Maple hooked up at the same time within this district because I do think that this might be a hindsight situation where we put all that density to the north and doesn't create another exit point, and it's just going to create more problems for us.
Two's better than one.
Well, we did bring up the fact, and I've heard it here tonight, I think Dale brought it up, there was a talk about possibly doing asphalt. Temporary, temporary. And I don't know if anybody got any numbers on that or put anything together on that. But that would be worth the, looks to me, just from the picture here, there has been some grade work done. Maybe not a significant amount, but enough to get where you could asphalt that out, and then you'd have that. And then moving forward, either the next buyer, next developer, this developer, whomever puts the road in, that would just be part of your development cost, tearing that out and repaving it in. But there has been discussion about that.
There has been, but I, I would ask that we still try to stay on topic here.
We're talking about going north to Macintosh.
All right, so we, plenty of discussion, I believe, from everybody sitting here. I think everybody's got it. Have you got enough questions to ask? Or you feel comfortable now about moving forward? You're still what? Okay. So we are at the point here, um, I need a short title. Yeah, short title.
An ordinance creating paving District Number 522 in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein and ordering the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Langy, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Jensen, Webb, Beckman. Ordinance Number 5950 carries on first reading only. Correct, made in six.
All right, now we're on to item number 42. Uh, consideration ordinance Number 5951, creating a water extension district Number 133, which provides for an extension of the water main on Legacy Drive and proposed connection uh, for North Macintosh, all, all located, Macintosh Road, I'm sorry, all located in northwest quarter of Section 33, Township 24, North Range, One West of Six, Primary Median, uh, I mean Meridian in the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska.
I'll offer consideration ordinance Number 5951.
Second. All right. Got a motion to second. Um, Steve, you're on the
Yep. Mayor and Council, this would be the creation of the water extension district for Legacy Bend Seventh Edition. It would install eight-inch water main to interconnect, uh, uh, city, city water infrastructure. Uh, essentially, the water main would be extended on Legacy Drive as well as on Macintosh Road. Uh, estimated, estimated assessment, 310,000.
310?
310. And I, I can entertain any, any questions council might have.
Any discussion? Anyone, anyone, uh, in public have anything to say? All right. Uh, short title, please.
An ordinance creating water extension district Number 133 in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan, specification, and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Langy, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Jensen, Webb, Beckman. Ordinance Number 5951 carries on first reading only.
Right. On item number 43, consideration of ordinance Number 5952, create a sanitary sewer extension district Number 59, or 259, which provides for the extension of sanitary sewer main on Legacy Drive and proposed connection of North Macintosh Road, all located in the northwest quarter of Section 23, Township 24, North, Range One West of the Sixth Principal Median in the city of Norfolk, Madison County. I'm sorry, Principal Meridian, Madison County, Nebraska. No, I'm going to get that right one of these times. All right.
Ordinance Number 5952. Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Discussion again. Steve?
Yep. Mayor and Council, this is the, this is the sanitary sewer extension district associated with Legacy Bend Seventh Edition. This would install sewer, sewer main services, uh, to provide sewer service to the four, I believe there's four parcels, one, two, three, four, five parcels in the subdivision, or future subdivision, associated with Legacy, associated with Legacy Bend Seventh Edition. Estimated cost of construction is 280,000. That's the all-in cost, includes engineering services, construction, all, all hard costs and soft costs.
You have any questions, discussion, discussion from the public? All right, see you in a short title.
An ordinance creating sanitary sewer extension district Number 259 in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan, specifications, and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
All right, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Langy, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Jensen, Webb, Beckman. Ordinance Number 5952 carries on first reading only.
All right, we're on to item number 45, consideration approval of an engineering design service and construction service contract with Olson Inc. for the improvement districts on Legacy Bend Seventh Edition for the amount not to exceed 129,500.
Your Honor, I will be abstaining on this, both in discussion and that, mainly, uh, because it was recommended that I should, uh, there was some claim or some, uh, site out there that thinks I have a financial advantage coming from a contract with Olson's, Olson's Engineering. I wonder how that can be. But I did check into it in January and connect, uh, contact to the Accountability and Disclosure Commission and specifically asked them if there was a problem. Presented the position that was out there. As you all know, my son Seth works for Olson's. I do not work for Olson's. I do not, uh, gain financially, whether they win or lose a situation. Uh, the, what came back from the, um, accountabilities and disclosure said that, um, the term immediate family is defined in NPADA as follows. An immediate family shall mean a child residing in an individual's household, a spouse, or an individual, or an individual claimed by that individual or that individual's spouse as a dependent for federal income tax purposes. For over 25, or over 20 years, I have not been able to claim Seth, nor been interested in claiming him as a, um, dependent that way. I mean, would it help me financially? Well, that, yeah, would it? He has not lived in my house or resided in my house for over 20 years. After he got out of college, he went on his own that way. Um, I, I have a hard grasp of how I am supposed to gain financially from that. Again, he is an employee of Olson's. He's not an employee of, not, he does not work for Hespe Construction, which I own, and he, I gained nothing from it. Uh, the state was quite clear. I guess we have an ordinance that muddies water a little bit that way. Um, I, I think though, uh, we've gone through these things also prior to that. A lot of you do not probably remember the, the discussions that was had concerning the, uh, former HR person and the former, um, uh, city attorney that way. And that Sue probably remembers that because we walked through it. But, uh, this to me seems to be ludicrous, but I will be abstaining from this, so.
All right. Okay. That being said, still.
I move for consideration of approval of the engineering design services.
Second. All right, we have a motion to second discussion. Steve?
Mayor and Council, this is the engineering, uh, services for Legacy Bend Seventh Edition for the, uh, paving district, water district, sewer district, and the construction, uh, administration inspection of those districts. Uh, breakdown is, uh, for the water main district, 10,000 in design, sewer district, 9,500 in design, paving district, 40,000 in design. Uh, for construction services, it is 62,000 plus another 8,000 for storm water pollution prevention plan inspections uh, and maintenance. So total 129,500. Uh, as I indicated, total, uh, across the, the total cost here, we're about, um, uh, somewhere, somewhere around 6% in design, 6, 7% for CE and I. Um, so again, they're, they're very good, very good, very good cost for, for those services.
Steve, who, where does that money come from, the 129?
It comes out of their assessment.
Out of their assessment?
Yeah, initially, we upfront that, but then we, we assess that. Uh, it's just like the paving, the water, and the sewer. Uh, the, the function of the assessment district is we incur the costs and then we assess them, uh, once all the costs are in.
So we'll take that out of a general fund to pay?
So that would be, it comes out of, yeah, it comes out of a special assessments fund.
This is a question here, but, you know, you've got three readings out there.
Correct.
So I don't know if we can vote on this when you still have three, three, three things to be passed.
So
So I'm, I might, my thought would be this and price on the table.
Something that can be, can be discussed and contemplated there.
Still have discussion, because we'll have open discussion on those three other items.
Worst case in the end, worst case in the end, we own, we own the design.
There you have it. All right. Well, even if, do you move forward with the design without?
Right, we can move forward with, with the design. In the end, if we don't assess it, we own it. And then we could, you know, if, if there's another path, if eminent domain is a path.
Sorry, but this, I think you'd want to have
But if you want to hold it, I'm not opposed to holding it until that third reading.
Just, I mean,
I, I, I think he brings up a valid point here because Shane knows, because it, let's say we decide to go a different route and, right? Would our, really, would our construction design be Legacy Bend going to a dead end or just turning and going up to Macintosh or, or looking at something else? So let's, I, I think it's in our best interest just to table this until we get to the third reading of the other three. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this topic.
I'll second that.
Okay. So now I need to go straight to a vote on the motion to table? So no discussion. Please vote. Okay, this will be verbal.
Grandquist?
Yes.
Arns?
Yes.
Webb?
This is the table.
Table.
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Uh, Hildebrand?
Yes.
So, voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arns, Webb, McCarthy, Beckman, Jensen, Hildebrand, stating, Langy, motion carries.
Okay. Now we don't, that's all. All right. At this point in time, um, may I have a motion to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest? Due to Tudikin's discussion on Nebraska, Nebraska Public Power District contract negotiations. I'll make the motion. Um, got a motion second, please vote. Which question?
Please.
I'm just, I have a question of how that's legal. How is that legal? I don't see that as a reason to go into closed session. I'm just asking for an opinion as to how that's, how we perceive that as being legal. I understand, but what is the protection of the public interest? What are we protecting? Pardon? But how is that protecting the public interest?
You already posted the vote. Yeah, I think
We need to vote.
We're up, we're up to vote, Jim. We missed the conversation time, sorry.
I, I just want to go on the record as having questioned that. Thank you.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay. Motion carried. Again, the closed session is the protection of the public interest, the discussion, Nebraska Public Power. In the closed session was the Nebraska Public Power District NPPD contract negotiations. May I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
We are adjourned. Thanks for coming out tonight.